On it stands, we do the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. Face the flag, we salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me. Which you bow to me, please. Our most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you this evening. Lord, just thank you for the rain. We're curious through the summer. Lord, just, we live this meeting up to you tonight, Lord, just give us the wisdom and knowledge we need to do the very best job we can to operate this city and represent its citizens. Be with each and everyone here tonight. Give them safe travel home. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for joining us. At this time, would the clerk call roll, please?
Ms. Poe?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Chairman Catty?
Here.
This is the public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of May twentieth, twenty twenty four.
I recommend approving. I'll second.
The motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Chairman Catty?
Yes.
Item number two, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting invoice number four from wall engineering for the headworks project A T dash twenty-two dash O two in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. That's attachment two in your packet. Is there any questions?
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Chairman Catty?
Yes. Item number three, discussion with action to award of water wastewater treatment plant headworks improvement to H C C C O Inc. in the amount of two million seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars with authorization for the mayor to sign all docs documents contingent upon release of funds from O W R B, which is Oklahoma Water Resource Board.
That's on attachment number three.
And this was last week?
That's to accept the, the low bid of turning to that li- loan that y'all approved as stipend for without O W R B.
Uh, you wasn't here last week, Erica. We, it, big came out a little bit more, so we, we did that last week. So this is a, for everybody, the mayor to sign everything. So I recommend approving. I'll second.
The motion is second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Chairman Catty?
Yes. Would you move down? Is there any trustee comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
The motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Chairman Catty?
Yes. Uh, we enter into the second meeting of the evening, the city council meeting. Would the clerk call roll, please?
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Ms. Poe?
Here.
Mayor Catty?
Yes. Here. Sorry. Here. Okay, this is the public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the council at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of May twentieth, twenty twenty four.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
And Mayor Catty?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the city manager's report. Mr. D Lee, good evening to you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my report's on attachment number two, if anyone has any questions.
Any questions for the city manager?
No one has any questions. I recommend approving. I'll second.
Rick Knott? Good. The motion is second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
And Mayor Catty?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting blanket purchase orders for the month of June twenty twenty four.
Those are on attachment number three, if anyone has any questions.
I recommend approving. I'll second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Catty?
Yes. Item number four, discussion and/or action to award Miller asphalt the overlay job of Gen Road from thirteenth street to fifteenth street, including labor and materials of two-inch hot mix asphalt in the amount of forty thousand three hundred.
This is a little stretch that I've received numerous phone calls on since I've been here, so it would be very great to get to finally overlay that.
So the general, I thought they did fifteenth, that little.
We hadn't done this yet. We did the fifteenth longways. This is from thirteenth to fifteen.
Oh, okay.
From, you know, from the highway up those first two blocks. Yes, yes.
Yeah, the general, yeah, okay. Okay. I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion, second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mayor Catty?
Yes. Item number five, discussion with action on award of wastewater treatment plant headworks improvement to H C C C O Inc. in the amount of two million seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars with authorization for the mayor to sign all documents contingent upon release of funds from O W R B. Again, this is what we just approved in the previous meeting.
Yes.
Just another step that we have to go through to finalize.
I recommend approving. I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Catty?
Yes. Item number six, discussion and/or action on ordinance number six oh four, closing Penn Avenue lying between Court Street and A Street, certain portions of an alleyway in lots four of block twenty-six, and providing a repealer and servability.
That one would come to me, I'm sure. Uh, this is just a formality. We're required to pass an ordinance to formally close Pennsylvania prior to the court, um, vacating that portion of the plat. That hearing is set for June tenth, so I need you guys to approve this tonight.
I recommend approving. I'll second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
And Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
And Mayor Catty?
Yes. Item number seven, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting a maintenance agreement as it relates to highway illumination along U S sixty-nine as part of project J P dash three zero four one zero oh four with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. Mr. D Lee, this is a.
This is the attachment number seven, and I've got y'all a map also there. I think we need to.
So I thought that.
What's it all about?
I mistakenly thought that our city limits, we kind of had a strip that went all the way to Tuskegee. I've since learned tonight that we do not. So I don't see a way that we could provide illumination to that section that lies outside of our city limits.
Who's asking?
ODOT.
They're working on the fifth lane improvement project between Tuskegee and Attoka, and I guess in that plan, it had drawings to have safety lighting, like along the corridor of the main core of town. They're wanting to extend that down to the southern end of that project. You know, of course, a portion that would be in Tuskegee's limits would be, I'm assuming, would be their responsibility, but there's this gap here that, that is.
Where's the gap?
The, the blue line.
Okay, all of this?
Yeah, so you just.
Oh, just man.
My understanding was our city lim- we, I thought we had it on both sides. It actually just comes, there's a piece out on the east side of the highway, I thought. But I know on the west side of the highways, our, our city limit stops at, uh, Community Chapel. So between Community Chapel and Tuskegee's city limits, there's a gap, but then also because it's not on both sides, there's this additional gap all the way back to the north side of basically diamond manufacturing. On the west side of the highway. So I think that needs to be looked at also.
What's, what's in this strip right here? Like, what's on that side?
On the east side?
Yeah.
A house.
Just houses over there?
There's just one house on, or maybe two on the east side, and I don't see anything on the west side.
You were talking about the west side, right?
Well, yeah, yeah.
That'd be west side there.
This is the west side?
No, that's east side there.
The east side?
Oh, you're talking over here. I was just talking over here.
I was just wondering where we stopped at. Are we still piloting?
I think some of this, the old Richter salvage, is it not?
It is.
Okay. So that is, that piece is technically out of the city limits side.
Yeah. So we don't even, we wouldn't even touch the highway on that side, but the other side maybe.
Right. So that's why you would have the op- you know, if they wanted, if we wanted to move forward with that, you could do lighting on one side currently down to this point, but there's still a gap. And, and I think if you're gonna use, you know, utilize like the streetlight program like we do on all the other lighting we have in town, you, you can't have anything outside your city limits, so they couldn't, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to put any lighting on the east side from the north end of Mr. Richter's property to where Community Chapel is, and then there's this zone in between that's technically county that nobody, nobody has authority over, either Tuskegee or Attoka.
Does the county not have a streetlight program? No. Does somebody have to verify this before, I mean, if it goes any farther today?
Yeah, the council has to approve it.
Well, yeah, but.
Yeah, so we need to do more research on this. We can table this item, then get some more, get some more information, and then come back.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yeah. I'll probably get to be.
Do we have to branch the table?
Well, I mean, I think the, basically it boils down to, we either need to not do that gap in between, or we need to do some kind of strip annex on that gap in between, so that it is in our city limits. Otherwise, I don't think legally.
Why would we want it in our city limits?
Huh?
Why would we want it? I, that's what I'm saying. What's the benefit?
Well, I mean, obviously, if it ever develops, you would want the sales tax revenue from it if, you know, that stretch ever gets something down there that is, uh, producing something.
Yeah, that would be, I mean, there's, I'd like to look at the map all the way through the project and not just this one segment here to.
Sure.
See what, uh, this was done, gosh, this, this extension of the city limits to the south was done over twenty years ago, and the, then they also went to the north to, to Boggy River at the same time, I'm, if I'm recalling correctly. Uh, it's, it's probably been north of twenty-five years ago, uh, that the city did that. Um, being even on the north end of town, it's just mainly the highway corridor that captures the city limits. And so, you know, with that comes additional maintenances and things that we do on the rest of the right ways that are inside because of some federal or state statutory items. But, you know, if we're looking at, you know, the only thing that would, to me, I mean, that's, I think, also some discussions whether we want to do this. If, if Tuskegee has a plan to, to extend, I don't know. But, you know, that stretch of road through there is really dangerous. It's dark. Now, it will be great with them widening it and putting in a turn lane, and it, it's a little uncomfortable when you pass two semis going one way and a semi's on one side, and you're in the inside lane, and you're this little, you're the, you're the filling in the Oreo cookie there, if you will, you know, as you go through the middle of all that, it's a little unnerving, but it's also very dark through there, and I think their deal is putting the lighting in as for safety aspect of being able to see if there's pedestrians on the side of the roadway, anything like that, so.
So looking at this, ODOT says that this is ours, basically.
Which, which piece?
The strip there. Oh, okay.
No, no, they're.
They're asking if we'll take that responsibility on, even though it's not ours.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Correct. And we can't just, like, City Attorney said, we can't just arbitrarily run lighting in there and pay for that when it's not in our city limits. So there would have to be an adjustment to our city limits, or Tuskegee would have to bring theirs to the north, one of the two, to fill in that gap.
Or no lights, or ODOT pays for lights.
Or no. Or no lights at all. Correct.
Or ODOT could pay for those, those lights.
There you go. Yeah. So we'll, we'll, uh, bring this back at a later time with more information. I'll have City Manager Nottingham like you. We'll get to work.
Yep. I tried to make phone call today, and I couldn't get through anyone.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, this time we'll table item number seven until a later date. All right. All right. And item number five, executive session. Executive se- thank you for being, Mr. Turner.
You're welcome.
You're, you're, did I miss something?
I know. I've got the house building here.
Executive session. An executive session is authorized by Title twenty-five, State Statute, Section three oh seven B four for confidential communications between the council and its attorney concerning possible efforts and/or litigation to acquire an easement for roadways in and adjacent to the heavy industrial park in Section one, Township two south, Range eleven east, Attoka County, Oklahoma. At this time, do I hear a motion to enter into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
The motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mayor Catty?
Yes. Yes. All right, uh, a return from, out of six, return from executive session. This time, do I hear a motion to enter into open session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion and second, roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
And Mayor Caffey?
Yes. All right, number one, item from, as we return, is acknowledgement of minutes in executive session, minutes were taken. And item two, discussion, consideration, and possible vote to authorize the City Attorney to act, including the filing of litigation if necessary, to acquire easements for a roadway in and adjacent, excuse me, to the heavy industrial park in section one township two south, range eleven east, Etoka County, Oklahoma.
Um, I would request the items two and three be tabled for the current moment as we need to make some adjustments to the location of the road.
Okay, very good. Okay, move down the agenda. Do I hear any council comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion and second, roll call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
And Mayor Caffey?
Yes. All right. Moving to our last meeting of the evening, the Etoka City Industrial Development Authority, would you call roll, please?
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Ms. Pogue?
Here.
And Chairman Caffey?
Here. And this is public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, excuse me. Discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of May twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion and second, roll call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Chairman Caffey?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and or action regarding accepting or rejecting the Economic Development Director's report. Good evening, Ms. Carol, how are you?
Good evening. So, of course, the big news is, uh, Green Lion's grand opening, or ribbon cutting, which will be the eighteenth. Um, there are people flying in from all over the world to come to this, so it's a very exciting time for Etoka, and they are approving daily about how they are really good community partners. This is the first PCAM facility in North America, and it's coming to Oklahoma, and it's coming to Etoka. It's a lot of stuff to be proud of on that. We've got a lot of other things going on that, um, it, it just makes this an excellent time to be investing in Etoka, and we've got a lot of, uh, people looking for offices, so.
So, we get a reserve online, that was different.
Uh, oh, the RSVP?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, you can let me know if it's too much of a hassle.
Oh, well, I didn't do it, but my daughter did, so.
We don't, we don't have to shake hands with the governor to do it. I'm a Democrat.
He is scheduled to be here. I, I will only say this, Governor Stitt is scheduled to be here.
Uh, you might check to make sure that people could RSVP because you had to hunt it down to find the RSVP because it's in the invitation and not on the email.
Yes, I sent it to them. Uh-uh.
It's, so, I mean, if you don't, if you have a low turnout, you might send it back out, or have them send it back out.
Yeah.
Will do.
Good. Good.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion and second, roll call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Chairman Caffey?
Yes.
This is.
No, you did.
It sounded evil, didn't it?
I was, I was gonna tell you, you made up for it online.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was, I'd looked at that earlier. I thought I would give you one, you know, prop before I got into this one about, hey, what a good job you did.
And, and just for, uh, logistical purposes, we have two executive sessions that you're gonna read through. We will vote, separate on both of those, and then go into the executive sessions. So, we don't have to vote, go into one, vote, go into one, so. You'll read through both of these and we'll vote on them separately.
Okay, so, read one at a time?
Yeah.
There you go, okay. Uh, executive session, item number one, an executive session is authorized by Title twenty-five State Statute three oh seven B four for confidential communications between the council and its attorney concerning possible default of the lease agreement recorded in book nine thirty-one and page three seventy-four of the Etoka County land records and potential efforts and or litigation to acquire, retain, uh, retain possession of, uh, property located in the heavy industrial park, section one township two south, range eleven east, Etoka, Oklahoma. At this time, do I hear a motion to enter into executive ses- session on this item?
Oh, you got.
Item number one.
One, okay. Yes, I, I'll rec- I'll approve, or make that motion to enter into executive session.
I'll second.
A motion and second, roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Chairman Caffey?
Yes. Now, item number two.
Mm-hmm.
That Johnny got a little wordy on, but, item number two, an executive session is authorized by Title twenty-five State Statute three oh seven, C eleven, all nonprofits, foundations, boards, bureaus, commissions, agencies, trusteeships, authorities, councils, committees, public trust, task force, or study groups supported in whole or part by public funds or entrusted with the expenditure of public funds for the purpose of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing, or creation of a proposal to entice a business to locate within their jurisdiction if public disclosure of the matter discussed would interfere with the development of the products or services, or if the public disclosure would violate the competitionality of the business, specifically to update the Etoka City Industrial Development Authority Board on economic development projects, including but not limited to hotel projects and for possible real estate transactions that cannot be publicly disclosed due to the confidential nature of the business relocation. At this time, do I hear a motion to enter into executive session on item number two?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion and second, roll call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Chairman Caffey?
Yes.
Item number one, acknowledgment of minutes of executive session, minutes were taken. Item number two, discussion, consideration, and possible vote to authorize city attorney to act, including the filing of litigation if necessary to recover possessions of properties located in the heavy industrial park in section one township two, south range eleven east Oke... County, Oklahoma, under, which is under a lease agreement recorded in book nine thirty-one at page three seventy-four. This time do I hear a motion on this item?
I would request that you authorize me to send a notice of default letter to the lessee.
So, does someone make that motion?
Yes, I make that motion.
Okay, have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Uh, Chairman Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and/or action on authorizing the city attorney to retain outside counsel if necessary to recover possessions of property located in the heavy industrial park in section one township two, south range eleven east Oke... County, Oklahoma, which is in, which is under a lease agreement recorded in book nine thirty-one at page three seventy-four. Do I hear a motion on this item?
It would be my recommendation that we not take any action on this, uh, on this item.
I'll make that motion.
We don't need a motion for that.
No, no, no action.
Oh, no action, okay, thanks.
Item dies for lack of a motion. Item number four, discussion and/or action on efforts the Otoka City Industrial Development Authority may take to pursue the construction of hotel projects located within the city of Otoka.
We're gonna table that, that item.
This item will be tabled until a future meeting. Okay, now as we move down, is there any trustee comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll think it.
Motion and second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
And Chairman Cathy?
Yes.
I will not be at the next meeting.
We are adjourned, thank you all.
Okay.
You will have to suffer too.
Where you going, and where you going?